The flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of our Constitution, where we stand as Americans, in the name of our republic, in the name of God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, so first up on the agenda, we have the citizen's forum. Linda, has anyone requested to speak?
No, no one's there.
Okay, so next up, we have the regular discussion of concrete roads. Okay, so what am I doing here? Everybody out a, this is an example, printout from the maturity meters. So what this is, remember, what we're doing on the roads is we have, we have maturity meters set up to read the strength rather than doing breaks at certain intervals. And what they do is they go and they plug in and it will tell them at like 10 minute intervals, it does readings in the thermocouple as far as what the strength is. So what this thing here is showing you, if you were to look up, about the middle page, it says placement date, 6/18/301 PM. So this is control point number 27 on Stowe, and it says they placed it in at 3:01 PM. That's when this concrete was poured. And then up at the top, top line there says goal one. So at 10:21 PM, it hit 3,002.9 PSI. So the design strength is 4,000. So it's 4,000 before you can open the road for traffic. It's 3,000 before you can scoot across it, it's your car. So we hit it Friday night at 10:00 PM, 10:21, we hit the open driveway mark. So it took whatever that is, so seven hours plus, it took 31 hours for it to get there. So on this side of town over here, it was taking basically about three days, two to three days, doing cylinder breaks. And what I told people in the mayor's letter was 48 hours because we're using high strength, fast setting concrete, which we're doing to make it set even harder faster. So 48 hours, what I was telling people in the mayor's letter, the flyers they're putting out tell them to stay out for 72 hours. So that was, that's a little much, but the idea is they're supposed to measure this and when it hits the mark, they go out and what they're supposed to do is take the barricades off the driveway and drop some road base down because you got a six inch hump to get over, and then your driveway is open, but the road is closed. So you can just get across it and you're in business. Okay? Now unfortunately, at the first pour, they did that on Thursday, and Friday it rained, which is okay. Well Saturday, they decided they weren't going to work because it rained. And then Sunday, they didn't work because it was Sunday. And then Monday, apparently it was cloudy and it rained a little bit, so they decided not to come to work on Monday either. So, and the actual road, it took 31 hours, but I got emails saying it's going to 120 hours mark, it's been five days. Is anybody going to open the, did I open my driveway? So it was a malfunction. So we have a meeting today, Clint was there, we remember the engineers, we remember the road people. Everybody understood this was a screw up. That it was the very first set of concrete, the very first road, and everybody was looking at each other. So the engineers didn't follow up, maybe there was a pour on Thursday, they should have followed up on Friday to get these readings, and they didn't. So I had a call from Florida to try and figure out about the readings and why aren't we open? And then they opened on Tuesday. So we now have a due process in place that they are required, they cannot pour on, they pour on Friday, they have to open Monday morning. Because we know it's going to take two days. They'll be ready in 48 hours. So if you, for instance, they're going to pour tomorrow. So when they pour tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM, that road section will probably be ready by 5 o'clock in the evening Saturday, they pour Friday morning. The question is, are the guys here to take the reading? So that's kind of what we're trying to work out, because if it's, if it's open, then open it. There's no reason to wait a whole day. And all you need is one guy to just dump a load of rocks in front of the driveway. It's not hard. Move the barrier, dump the rocks, and we're done. So that's kind of what we're working out now, to make sure everybody understands that there's no reason why that can't be opened the second day after. So if, if it's, if we pour on Monday, then that means Tuesday is good, that means Wednesday morning is 48 hours, that road should be open, that driveway should be open. And the data shows, I can give you all the other control points, but basically it took 34 hours, it took 31 to 34 hours for it to reach strength. So the, the maturity meters are working, the high strength concrete is working, what failed us was the humans. All the technology looks good, the humans didn't, they messed it up. So, but, the first pour, the good news is we have probably 50 more of these to do and 11 and a half months to go. So we're, we're going to get back on trajectory. So that is, that's kind of the idea with that. The other issues that came up.
I have a question. Yeah. So if they pour tomorrow, so who's job now is to follow up on Saturday, Ed Bell's job or the engineer's job, or our job?
That's a good question. That's exactly what the meeting was today, because I assumed, not that Clint would agree, we assumed that Tim Lee Horn was looking out for us.
Because I saw them there Thursday, I talked to him. He was there the day of the pour, the engineers were there.
Right.
But I didn't see them Friday.
So they know when a pour's happening, they get alerted that the pour's happening because the testing people have to be there to get the cylinders. So about every 500 feet, they have to pour cylinders. So they get alerted, test, we, the testing people are tomorrow, we're pouring tomorrow, we're underway, so they get alerted. So again, that was a, 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 who's on first moment to say, that's what we're paying you guys for.
Who, who gets these, do you get, do you guys get these or only Ed Bell gets these and the engineers get the accident?
Ed Bell is the one that gets these pours.
So the engineers don't get them without asking?
That was the problem. I think Clint, Clint put it great, it was, you know, is it a push or is it a pull? Like are, you know, Ed Bell is just putting these out to the engineers.
This first week was an habit pistol over deep. The engineering firm was assuming that Ed Bell was doing it. Ed Bell was just, between the rain and the superintendent was Houston, and so it was raining, he was anxious to go home, and so he went home, his boss was going to cover, didn't cover, so it was just, it was not a good execution week for him.
So our understanding is right now is that Tim Lee Horn is supposed to ask for this.
Yes, that was what we left with, was that Ed Bell is, they're ultimately responsible for it, but Tim Lee Horn's to be a little bit more proactive, like, hey, it's coming up on 36 hours and we haven't heard anything, you know, or.
Now, we are, yeah.
Yeah, I told them, I want Ed Bell to do that, not Tim Lee Horn.
They shared this with us to show them what they're doing for maturity meters and how they work.
You still need Ed Bell though, because they need to put the rocks in front of the driveway, right?
Right.
Dumped to be able to do.
So even if we, even if we can read the meters, even if we got our own app on our phone.
We can, but we can't.
We can put emergency.
Exactly.
You can't go for it.
Ultimately, we don't, we don't want to do that because Ed Bell is responsible for the warranty, so they need to own the report, they need to own the process.
Right, which makes sense.
Right, but you can imagine that in order to do this, somebody got to read the damn thing. So if they don't read it for five days, that's not very helpful.
And that's what's failing.
That's, that's the failure mode, right?
And Tim Lee Horn didn't think to ask either, and so nobody, nobody created a reminder. We assumed that we hired two competent firms to do it, and they just talked to us.
Yeah, it was a communication problem. But again, we've got 50 more of these to go. The good news is we, we figured it out at step one, probably the shortest pour we're going to do, the whole thing. We only did probably 300 feet.
There was, yeah.
Because it's three houses.
There was three driveways impacted on this one, which is, you know, where the second pour, what is there, five or six, I think.
Yeah, they, they did a long, you know, rather, they're going to finish tomorrow.
It sucks.
They're going to finish one side tomorrow.
Absolutely, and excuse me, the three that had to live through it, but at the same time, it's overlooked, well, probably, I think that was just the three that were.
So we'll, we'll, we'll get better. So, so we're going to get better on that. The, the garbage pickup is a standard operating procedure. The trucks will get there when they get there. If they can't get there because there's construction equipment, they'll come later. They'll come the next day. I mean, I, I talked with, I talked with the garbage people before, you know, I put it in the mayor's letter. I have pictures of people with their garbage cans on the opposite side of the rebar. Well, yeah, can still fall.
It doesn't reach that far. They don't run the truck.
They will not, and, and I've reiterated this with, with Republic, that driver knows that they're a dead man, they drive on the rebar, on the cut, they are not to drive on anything other than the dirt. And if that's given, they're not to be a hero and try and drive across the rebar to try and get one person who decided to move their can 350 feet up their driveway and stop 10 feet short of the other side. So, you know, the way they work with this stuff is you pull your can up, and if everybody else puts it on the other side of the street and you don't, then when they pick up everybody but you, you'll figure it out. Darwin will win out in the end. So you'll figure it out when you realize they're not picking your can up. And then you either adapt or let it sit there. But, you know, we can't cover every possible scenario. That's why I put it in the mayor's letter. Okay? Now, one of the other issues that came up was some craziness about walking across the concrete. Now, again, this, this, borderline comical, borderline pull my head around. It takes 72 hours, 48 to 72 hours before you can drive across it with a 3,000 pound vehicle. Now about three to four hours after they pour the concrete, there's a big old concrete saw with two workers, saw cutting it. They're going across it after three to four hours, saw cutting the concrete with a big old concrete saw and two workers. So pretty much, after it's hard, you're not going to hurt it. You're a 150 pound person walking across a foot of reinforced, high strength concrete. But for some reason, there was some Facebook oriented, screw around, the world is ending phenomenon that we just ignore it, it would be just fine. So this side of town, not one person stood at the end of their driveway and cried about how do I get across the wet concrete? They walked around it, or they waited three hours and walked across it. It was a pretty much, again, Darwin will win. If you want to stand at the end of the driveway for four days, that's fine, but everybody else, they'll walk across. So that's handled. For some reason, that is a problem. That was not a problem. Now the bigger problem, and I'm going to be brief on this, is you've got to stay the hell off Facebook. Stop reading it. You guys are reading it and then you're going to Linda, and then Linda's reacting, and Linda doesn't know what to do. She's trying to be helpful, and then she's reacting. And if we do absolutely nothing, and just let it play out, like I've said in the mayor's letter, then everything will work. Darwin will win and everybody will get it. Okay? So, we took down the street signs because they're in the way. I'm going to put in the mayor's letter that we have to get new blades, because the federal government has decided you have to have lowercase for street signs, uppercase isn't allowed anymore. So as I said, we got to go upper and lower case. So we're going to have High Ridge, we're going to lower G, and we have to replace the blades, like all the street signs. Well, all have to come out anyway. They're all in the way of the road, of the grading of the road. So we're taken to death. They're at the sewer plant, they're stuck, they're actually stuck tall in the corner. We're going to put back with new blades, which I'm going to come to you guys and have you pick colors, because we have to pick the right color. But if somebody goes on Facebook and says, oh my God, there's no street signs, we're all going to die. The, the fire department can't get you. What will my daughter do without a street sign? She can't come home. We're all lost. I can't get home. If somebody goes on Facebook and makes up something, I heard the city said, somebody told them, the construction guys, that we're not putting them back. And then somebody else goes, oh my God, that's a whore, we can't not put the, and then you guys read it and tell Linda, oh my God, people can't find their way home. We have to do something. And then Linda called the engineers to say, what can we do? And they rushed out and said, let's paint the barrels. Let's go out and spray paint them. We're going down a path of stupidity for no reason. We just got to stay off Facebook. Just stop reading it. I write the mayor's letter. Clint has spent years on the website. That website's great. He's spent thousands, thousands of hours on that website. And the problem is, as long as people can go on Facebook and say, I'm not going to read the mayor's letter, I'm not going to go on to our website, I'm not going to look at the whole page, which is all about construction news. I am not going to do all those things. All I am going to do is write something silly on Facebook and everybody will react to it. Then they don't have any incentive to go down the, the path that we're setting now. So you're undermining the official pathways that we put in place, because they don't have to follow the rules. If you don't want to read the mayor's letter, take it out of the envelope and throw it in the trash. Fine, you can do that, I don't have a problem with that. Because when I tell you in the mayor's letter, don't put your garbage can in front of the rebar. If you do, it's not getting picked up. When you go ahead and do it anyway, and it doesn't get picked up, that's a self inflicted wound. That is not our problem. That is not Linda's problem. It is nobody's problem. That's their own self inflicted wound. So we've got 11 and a half months to go. We got 50 more pours, and we got eight and a half streets still to go. We cannot, we cannot manage this project off Facebook. We cannot do that. So we spent money last week chasing down stuff because they built us. They dropped the flag. The engineers came out, there was a meeting with Linda, we spent money, hundreds of dollars an hour to determine that what we should do is tell the residents to put their garbage cans on the other side of the street from the rebar, which is precisely what I wrote in the mayor's letter. So I understand, you think that you want to be responsive to people, but the response mechanism is through the channels we have in place. As long as you react to somebody just blasting something silly on Facebook, then they're going to continue to do it. There's no discipline there. And we can't do that for the next 11 and a half months. It's not fair. I cannot deal with fire drills that are caused by somebody being silly. Darwin will work it out. When is, when is your thing going to get poured? When are they going to pour the concrete in front of your house? Well Matt, do you see any rebar yet? No. So they don't need to put a flyer in front of your house and say, hey, six weeks from now, we're going to pour concrete. There, there's no reason to do that. If even they made your schedule and said, we're going to pour you now on July 23rd, that's assuming it doesn't rain, the humidity's light, they get the rebar delivered on time, the workers are here. You can't, there, there's no way, we're, we're not flying aircraft.
Pandemic doesn't get worse.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, so the best we can do is, is no matter what they put on your door, if there's no rebar in front of your house, they're not pouring. When you see the rebar laying across your driveway, you've got like a day to get the heck out. And they're putting flyers up, they're telling you it's coming. So, but really, just use common sense. When you see that rebar up on the chairs, it's elevated and the four boards are up on the sides of it, they're pouring the next day. They're saying after, that you need to know that. But again, we don't need to put it on the marquee, you can look at it and see. It's, it's, it's a no brainer. We did this five years ago. We didn't have one single person get stuck in their driveway. Everybody got out. Everybody got out without a problem. And so I, I just, we don't want to start down this path where we have to take everybody and lead them by the hand and, and tell them stuff, well, you didn't say they were pouring. Well, you saw 32 concrete trucks rolling in front of your house. You saw the guys paving 20 feet away, yes. Now, we didn't go up and knock on your door, take you by the hand, and walk you down the driveway and tell you that we're pouring concrete, but we're not going to do that. That's just not the way that's going to work. And we have to set the expectation. There's 11 and a half months to go, eight and a half streets still to run. So we'll get through it. Okay? That, that's, that's the deal. The first pour was not well done. We'll get better. It's going to be smooth. I think it's going to get much smoother.
First one, five years ago, had some bumps and a two.
The first three, last time, we hit the pipe halfway down, at the other end of the intersection. We hit the pipe that just installed underground, that stall that you shattered. So we have to shut the job, the whole job down. So there's a few bumps in the road, but just let people live and learn. Okay? There's a lot of communication out there, they'll figure it out. We're going to do the same thing we did on the other side of the street, same process. It's going to work out. Everybody will figure it out. I guarantee you, they're going to figure it out. Okay? Any questions about the roads? My understanding is, I think Clint, they're going to start, I think next week, they're going to return back to the other end.
Yeah, they, they expect a pour tomorrow and finish out, I forget which side of the street, on Stevens, it's not really north, south, east, but, but the streets, the side that they're going out, they plan to finish possible, likely tomorrow. And then the next step is to open up the concrete lane to traffic and start forming up and, and doing whatever repair work that they have to do to them, because of the rain to the protection area to start pouring that. And that would probably be middle to late next week if they pour concrete.
Well, they may be pouring, starting back at the other end again, heading back out, so.
That one is going to be important because you'll really have to pay attention right now, is don't drive on the concrete, drive on the dirt. When we did construction last time, it was either driving the dirt or driving on the concrete, one or the other. This one will be, maybe you drive all the concrete and they shove you off and you're back in the dirt, so it might be just because of the way Stowe cord is and the way they're going to sequence it, that pay attention to the, to the signage that comes.
So their, their plan is, you know, they're going to rock and roll on Stowe, get done and move on, then they're headed toward Matt, they're headed down toward Woodcrest. But, um, it's different, Jake only did one side of the street, then they did the next street one side, and they, 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 they went down one side for a while to let it cure and then come back. So these guys are doing it differently.
One of the, one of the common questions that comes up is whether or not the concrete trucks will drive on the new concrete. They have to.
Or else, there's nowhere else to go.
They have to be on the, on concrete to do the other lanes, and that's just the nature of it.
Now, these, the maturity meters are in the concrete. You know, they, they don't take them out, they're, they're embedded in the concrete.
Just a thermocouple, it's not open.
Right, so what they, so right now, they, they go back right now and they're reading the first pour, they're still reading this.
Yeah, because they need to get to 4500 before they open it.
I know, once it gets north of 4,000.
Over 4,000, that's what it is.
So they're, they're looking at it now to see if the concrete trucks.
Yeah, it's also.
Should be over 800. Right, so, so they will not open that other lane. So the criteria to open the lane is the entire road has to be 4,000. So in front of, you know, the very first house, it might be 4,000 now, but obviously it's going to take a little while to get, so.
It sounded like they may.
Which was one of their calls, because originally they told me they wanted to wait till the whole street was open.
And then today, they said something a little different, they said they might get started since some of these suck.
Now, because the stagger is off.
Right.
Because then, it's like, there's five days between, you know, something pours. If they poured it like three straight days, then they could wait till, so anyway, they're going to wait that out.
So the stone, the clean, carry, the stone cord might be open on concrete, but then the rest of it.
But then they got to wait, so it's, it's their call. And, you know, that's one of the things that we.
You just kind of pay attention to the signs, don't move the barriers, be sure of the barriers that you're driving through, that you're on the correct side.
So I, and I think once that they get Stowe done, I understand, I think what's going to happen is they're going to head toward Woodcrest, then they're going to start doing the drainage and everything and carry it out. They're going to go to the Bermuda Triangle, because then Stowe will be wide open. So now you've got a way to get around the Bermuda Triangle there, go around Stowe. So that, that's what I think the next workflow is going to be, is once Stowe's done. Now I think everybody, if you drive down Melody, you can't miss, you know, the big red spools with, that's Sutherland. Sutherland is blowing it down, now Melody's doing boring and laying in the lines. And so they're headed that way. AT&amp;T has done some work, they've done it at the front end where the guys have cut the, cut the cable, right at the very front, because they waited, 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 and they never showed. They finally just cut it. They, they, they cut it with the, the road equipment. And then AT&amp;T came up and they stayed and moved the line. So, they poured it, put the line in, or sectioned. As far as I know, AT&amp;T is way behind, but they're supposed to be laying down.
Doesn't Link tell you when they're going to get done?
Someone said all of the shores, they think will be done within two months.
Wow. AT&amp;T's going to lose all business. They're putting in high speed stuff, who's going to go with AT&amp;T?
I, I, I.
Oh, not sure.
Fire service. But the thing is, just so everybody knows, when you're looking at Sutherland, putting these in, they're up in the utility. So you look at it and think, oh my gosh, they're way up in the yard. That's where the easements actually are. They're in the right place. Just everybody kind of got complacent, thinking that, you know, oh, you know, utilities go right on the, no, they don't on the engine street. They go way up in the yard. And again, that area up in the yard is on the citizens' property. That 10 foot easement is, is, is person up, that's the owner's land. If they hit sprinklers, water meters, anything up on the owner's property, they're responsible. That's why we didn't market, we're not up there. If they were down near the bar ditch, we would market because that's where the city utilities are. But that's where the city utilities are. That's not where they're allowed to go. We didn't give them permission on city property. We gave them permission, their permits are to go on the utility easement. So that's why, again, that's why they're boring, to try to go deep, because they're avoiding, they don't know where your sprinklers are or your main service line to go into your house, they know where your water meter is. So that's why they're doing all that boring. So if, if anybody says anything to you, like, yeah, that's, they're absolutely in the right spot. That's where they go. And they have no effect on the road. That's why they can do it now. No matter how we grade the barges or what we do to the barges, you're not close. We spew them. That's why I love them, so happy that they're going right now. Okay? But that's it, so, you know, we'll, we'll.
Further roads, the, you said on Friday, it's the last step, they're going to start filling in some of the holes and stuff they're going over on the existing roads?
That came up today.
Okay, because they didn't do it last, well, because of rain, I'm assuming, but.
They claimed that they do it every Friday.
I think what we found is they were only really looking at High Ridge and Melody, they weren't looking at the entire length of Melody. So they were, they're going to go back and look at them again.
I mean, what they, what they said was, at the intersection of Melody and High Ridge, where the, that corner, yes, we, we kind of fixed up that corner, and down the bottom of the hill, they kept that in pretty good shape. The problem is the cement trucks are going the length of Melody, turning, going down through in front of your house, in front of your house, and they're turning left and they're looping. So there's some bomb craters out there in the middle of Melody Lane.
That's scary.
That's where they carried me from Melody.
Melody's there, yeah.
And, you know.
They just weren't looking at the whole thing, so.
Carry, that, that is terrible.
But Melody's terrible, and that's kind of what I told them today. And, and in the contract, which I read every single page of it last night, in the contract it says, they are required to maintain all the. in the contract, it says, they are required to maintain all the adjacent roads in the project. So any damage to the road, they have to repair it. So they're not allowed to mangle the road, the other roads, to get to the project roads. They're not allowed to destroy them in the act of, you know, um... So that came up today, and, um, that is supposed to be every Friday. My understanding is they didn't work last Friday. Anyway. Anybody ask? That is the current... Currently, the goal is they are required to make all the roads in the project drivable for the weekends. That's the understanding. We have it. Engineers have it. They have it. Weekends, drive.
It could be due to there's so much work on Melody, like, though all the Suddenlink trucks are there, so if they're parked over one of those pumps or something, then Ed Bell's probably just not paying attention to it.
They just weren't looking. They were only looking at the intersection.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Now they're aware. So our meeting today was a, okay, let's clear the decks.
It was just an awareness. We really asked them to take a look at Melody and High Ridge in shape, and they just overlooked the rest of it.
But the other thing that we have...
It's not anything new.
Nope. We have video up the roads before they start.
In the meantime, that's why they're here too, so slow down until we, until Melody's done.
Well, and because, you know, Melody is pretty much like, uh, end of the year. Melody is fifth on the list, so it's, in our current trajectory, it won't make it. It's gonna make Green Meadow look good.
Yeah, it's December. Yeah, they're keeping Green Meadow in decent shape.
Everybody's made a rundown to see the dirt patch? That's one street down.
There's one street down.
We're trying to figure out what to do next. That's one of our issues we're trying to figure out is how to put seven times as much dirt down there than we had currently have. I think lots of it, and everybody wants to bench, you know, so, well, we're going to, uh, you know... We're gonna now have the mayor's hill. We'll be in front of the park down there. So we'll hang glide off it or something. I don't know. Okay, so that's it with the roads. Hopefully... I mean, I think it looks great. The other night, I was in the dark. I was walking home. I started walking away, and I was down near where it curves around, still where it curved around and headed back toward the carriageway. And, um, it looked great, because it was, it's got curves. I mean, it's just looking, it's really beautiful concrete. The moonlight, the way the road had occurred. A lot of streets over here are fairly straight. But in the shores, I mean, there's a lot of curbs here in the roads. You'll see more... They made the road curve a little bit. There's more curves in it, so it's actually, it's gonna look, it's gonna be awesome. Really, it'll look good.